At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We do want you to know that the Fire Marshal has agreed to suspend the rules just for this once, but if you, by some chance, if there is an emergency, you see where the exits are, and they would open both exit doors, you would not have to go just the one over here. So just know that he's most graciously extended this opportunity for us to have family and friends here for this special occasion. At this time, I'd like to also recognize the fact that we've got some elected with us. I'd like Representative Zoka's here, Senator Kirk Devier's here, and Commissioner Michael Boose is here. Have I missed anyone else that's here? Welcome, and we appreciate you coming with us this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Michael McGill if he would come forward, and if you will, all please rise for our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dearest Father, we thank you on tonight, and we give you praise. We thank you for this day that you've made. Father, we pray, God, your blessing upon, we thank you for your blessing upon the town of Hope Mills. God, we thank you for just showing your favor toward us as a community. Father, oh, tonight, I pray for these elected officials, God, that you will fill them with your wisdom, so that as they carry out the various matters related to this community, that they will lead according to your heart. Father, we thank you on tonight for being so good to us, for blessing us with capable leadership. And Father, we pray, God, that as we go forward as a community, the decisions that are made in this place will be such that will foster an atmosphere of love and unity among the members of this community. We give you praise for this in all things, in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, if you have a seat. At this time, is there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. At this time, I have some special presentation. The first is a special plaque that is presented to Mayor Pro Tem Michael Mitchell in recognition and appreciation of your public service as a Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Hope Mills from 2017 to 2019 by the Hope Mills Mayor and Board of Commissioners. We appreciate everything you've done for the town of Hope Mills, and we hope that you'll accept this with gratitude.
Much love for citizens of Hope Mills. I'm very excited to see how much love there is for our town right here. We've all become a family. We don't always agree, but we all come together on various points and find a way to move the town forward. And I would just encourage the new board, always be professional, always be kind, and always make smart business decisions. And I know you do well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd also like to present to Megan Larson in recognition and appreciation of your public service as a Commissioner for the town of Hope Mills from 2017 to 2019 by the Hope Mills Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank you also for your contributions to our town.
I just want to say it was an honor serving the people of Hope Mills, and I wish only success for the new board. Your success is success for Hope Mills, so I look forward to seeing wonderful things happening in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have a special introduction. Our county has hired a new Cumberland County Plan Director. Give you a little information about him. Rawls has worked in urban planning, community development, and land management for various local, regional, and federal organizations for over 20 years in North Carolina, Florida, Texas, and Eastern Europe. He is a native of Tarboro in Edgecombe County, North Carolina. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree with a double major in geography and urban planning from East Carolina University, and a Master of Arts in Geography from Appalachian State University. He is certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, the American Association of Code Enforcement, Congress for the New Urbanism, and the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials. He is married with one child, also named Rawls, and resides in the Jack Grit area of Cumberland County. Would like to welcome you, Mr. Rawls Howard, and if you would like, if you can stand so people can see who you are, and welcome to Hope Mills, but most importantly, welcome as in your new role for Cumberland County. We do have a copy of our manager's report that was placed at the back. If you have not received a copy of it, rather than have this report read at this time, what we will do is, if you have any questions after reading it, this is the report from Ms. Adams, and this will not, we won't take the time at this time to read this for everyone. So, thank you, Ms. Adams, for this report, and we appreciate it. And again, if there's any questions, this is the report, and it's at the back. At this time, we're going to recess, so that this board, that this 2017-2019 board can vacate their seats, so that we can recognize the new board. We appreciate everything that this board has done, and we're looking forward to working, moving forward in 2020 with a new board that will be seated momentarily. So at this time, we'll recess for about three minutes for us to get organized, and then we'll pick back up with swearing in. Thank you. of swearing in our new board. Our first person to be sworn will be Mayor-elect Jackie Warner. If her son could come up, I believe.
If our family will come on up, all of them.
Can you do it down there?
Our family has grown since I've been mayor.
I, Jackie Warner.
I, Jackie Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as Hope Mills Mayor.
The duties of my office as Hope Mills Mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God. I just want to thank everyone in this room. I think the most important thing you need to know is that, what's important to me, of course, is family, but friends, and all of you that have helped election 2019, that big family group that we started, I can't tell you how much you mean to me. And most importantly, even this little lady over here, this red hat, I can't tell you, she showed up today dressed like Dallas Cowboy Trilly. That ding, her name is that ding. My pastor is here, the other pastors that we've been close to, Mr. Jenkins and Trish, everybody here. Just know that I am so appreciative of your support, my former students that are here, former teachers that are here. God bless you all, and we're moving forward. It's all I can tell you, is we're moving forward, and bright days are gonna be ahead. One more thing I can tell you is, my son, the Bible that he, that I was sworn in with, was a Bible that my son held when his dad was sworn in. My Teddy Ben wasn't old enough to swear anybody in. So just know that the family that's here, they've been through a lot this past two years, and this young man right here, I'm so very proud of him, and I'm proud that tonight, he can be a great part of this and swear me in. So, thank you, son.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Kenwanna McCray to come forward with her family, and we'll proceed with Senator Kirk Devier is going to be swearing her in.
Madam Chair, if I could, moment of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to say, Dr. McCray, it's an honor to stand up here with you tonight and swear you in to this commission and make history in the town of Hope Mills. So I'm very honored that you asked me to do this. So thank you very much. And with that, I will ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
I, Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Therewith. And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God. And if I could say, I am very honored to serve Hope Mills. I will serve my community honorably. You all will not be disappointed. I thank you all, the people of Hope Mills, and the people that have been out there in Hope Mills, everyone that has supported me, I really, really do appreciate it. And Senator Devier, I'm honored that you swore me in, you really supported me. It was a tough election, but you really supported me, and I appreciate it. I appreciate Pastor McGill, everybody that prayed, and again, supported me, and I pray to do great things for the town of Hope Mills. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Jessie Bellflowers and Deputy Town Clerk Tiffany Shadak will be the one that is swearing him in. If Mr. Bellflowers and family members would come up at this time.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, is there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. At this time, I have some special presentation. The first is a special plaque that is presented to Mayor Pro Tem Michael Mitchell in recognition and appreciation of your public service as a Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Hope Mills from 2017 to 2019 by the Hope Mills Mayor and Board of Commissioners. We appreciate everything you've done for the town of Hope Mills, and we hope that you'll accept this with gratitude.
I appreciate it. Much love for citizens of Hope Mills. I'm very excited to see how much love there is for our town right here. And we've all become a family. We don't always agree, but we all come together on various points and find a way to move the town forward. And I would just encourage the new board, always be professional, always be kind, and always make smart business decisions. And I know you do well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd also like to present to Megan Larson in recognition and appreciation of your public service as a Commissioner for the town of Hope Mills from 2017 to 2019 by the Hope Mills Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'd like to thank you also for your contributions to our town.
I just want to say it was an honor serving the people of Hope Mills, and I wish only success for the new board. Your success is success for Hope Mills, so I look forward to seeing wonderful things happening in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have a special introduction. Our county has hired a new Cumberland County Plan Director. Give you a little information about him. Rawls has worked in urban planning, community development, and land management for various local, regional, and federal organizations for over 20 years in North Carolina, Florida, Texas, and Eastern Europe. He is a native of Tarboro in Edgecombe County, North Carolina. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree with a double major in geography and urban planning from East Carolina University, and a Master of Arts in Geography from Appalachian State University. He is certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, the American Association of Code Enforcement, Congress for the New Urbanism, and the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials. He has married with one child, also named Rawls, and resides in the Jack Grit area of Cumberland County. Would like to welcome you, Mr. Rawls Howard, and if you would like, if you can stand so people can see who you are, and welcome to Hope Mills, but most importantly, welcome as in your new role for Cumberland County. We do have a copy of our manager's report that was placed at the back. If you have not received a copy of it, rather than have this report read at this time, what we will do is, if you have any questions after reading it, this is the report from Ms. Adams, and this will not, we won't take the time at this time to read this for everyone. So, thank you, Ms. Adams, for this report, and we appreciate it. And again, if there's any questions, this is the report, and it's at the back. At this time, we're going to recess, so that this board, that this 2017-2019 board can vacate their seats, so that we can recognize the new board. We appreciate everything that this board has done, and we're looking forward to working, moving forward in 2020 with a new board that will be seated momentarily. So at this time, we'll recess for about three minutes for us to get organized, and then we'll pick back up with swearing in. Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family, and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Kenwanna McCray to come forward with her family, and we'll proceed with Senator Kirk Devier is going to be swearing her in.
Madam Chair, if I could, moment of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to say, Dr. McCray, it's an honor to stand up here with you tonight and swear you in to this commission and make history in the town of Hope Mills. So I'm very honored that you asked me to do this. So thank you very much. And with that, I will ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
I, Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Jessie Bellflowers and Deputy Town Clerk Tiffany Shadak will be the one that is swearing him in. If Mr. Bellflowers and family members would come up at this time.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Pat Edwards and Cumberland County Commissioner Michael C. Boose to please come forward for her swearing in. Any family members with Commissioner Edwards, if you'll come on down?
Mayor Warner, if I could just have a few moments to express what a personal privilege and honor this is to swear this, not act, but swear this woman. Alls you can ask out of elected official is that they listen to you sincerely, and you follow. The other people here all know, and we all know about Pat, is that she's the heartbeat of Hope Mills, and I'm proud that she's back on board. Put your left hand on the bottom and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Dennis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Jessie Bellflowers and Deputy Town Clerk Tiffany Shadak will be the one that is swearing him in. If Mr. Bellflowers and family members would come up at this time.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family, and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling, to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family, and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling, to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Jessie Bellflowers and Deputy Town Clerk Tiffany Shadak will be the one that is swearing him in. If Mr. Bellflowers and family members would come up at this time.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to have Commissioner Jessie Bellflowers and Deputy Town Clerk Tiffany Shadak will be the one that is swearing him in. If Mr. Bellflowers and family members would come up at this time.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
I, Jessie Bellflowers.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family, and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling, to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family to come forward, along with his wife Tracy Marley, that's going to swear him in.
I, Brian A. Marley.
I, Brian A. Marley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family to come forward, along with his wife Tracy Marley, that's going to swear him in.
I, Brian A. Marley.
I, Brian A. Marley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family, and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling, to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will.
The duties of my office.
How are you?
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner-elect Pat Edwards and Crumming County Commissioner Michael C. Booth to please come forward for her swearing in. Any family members with Commissioner Edwards, if you'll come on down?
Mayor Warner, if I could just have a few moments to express what a personal privilege and honor this is to swear this, not at, but swear this woman. Alls you can ask out of an elected official is that they listen to you sincerely and follow you. The other people here all know, we all know about Pat is that she's the heartbeat of Hope Mills, and I'm proud that she's back on board here. Put your left hand on the bottom and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Jackie Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
Well, thank all that people here in the house now. But I just want to thank everybody for all your support. I'm going to my, um, good turn, and I love Hope Mills, all those people here. And I'm in Jersey, and I can help that team together and represent the one and the team that we have now. And again, I want to thank you all very much.
Next, I'd like to invite Commissioner-elect Jerry Legg and his family and along with Town Clerk Jane Starling to do his swearing in.
I, Jerry Legg.
I, Jerry Legg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North, of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith. Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
I want to thank everyone for, for the opportunity to, to serve you again, appreciate your trust, your support, and I will do the best I can to build even more trust and support for making us a one of you. There's a lot that we need to do in Hope Mills, and we need to start immediately, uh, so we can make progress and move forward as two by two, uh, get together as a team and do team work. Those of you who know me know that I'm involved in youth sports and, and face a team. And that's what I want to help more here as a team, along with my new fellow commissioners and my former fellow commissioners. Thank you, Richard, everyone for coming out tonight. God bless you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to ask Commissioner Brian Marley and his family to come forward along with his wife Tracy Marley that's going to swear him in.
I, Brian Marley.
I, Brian Marley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just let me, I just want to say, uh, to thank all the citizens of Hope Mills that, um, that are back to me again and, uh, saw fit to put me back in, uh, office. I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to getting to work with the board here. And, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention a few people, uh, my wife, my son, uh, my extended family here, um, my father and my sister wanted to be here, they couldn't be here, they had a prior engagement. Um, my mother, she's with me, she's not here, but she is with me, I'm wearing purple and not from my mouth. Sorry about that. I said, um, I appreciate everybody being here, appreciate everybody coming to share this moment with me. Um, even got one of my folks meeting here from, uh, the Hope family where I work full-time, Commissioner Andrew Thomas, he came to share this moment with you too, so I appreciate this, sir. Uh, just thank y'all for coming and ready to get to work.
I'm not going to argue with him, he's a whole head taller than I am. Brian moved from one end of this table to the other, didn't he?
At this time, I'll call the 2019, became almost 2020, Board of Com, Town Board of Commissioners back to get order, and the first thing that we have to do, and I'll recognize Commissioner Marley for nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's, uh, my honor at this time that I would like to nominate Dr. McCray as Mayor Pro Tem of Town of Hope Mills.
I don't need to, but I'm a second team.
All right. And I would like to say how exciting it is that, uh, we now have the first female mayor pro tem ever in Hope Mills. And at this time, we need to, to swear her in as mayor pro tem?
Yes, ma'am.
And is, um, Town Attorney Dan Hartsaw going to do that? Or you, yes?
Senator's going.
Senator Kurt Devier's going to do it, very good.
You always remember to take instructions from your wife. Repeat after me. I.
I.
Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
Dr. Kenwanna McCray.
Do hereby, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Hope Mills Mayor Pro Tem.
As Hope Mills Mayor Pro Tem.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And if I could say, this is my maternal grandmother's bio, as you can see, as you are, um, she's six, and she's living, she'll be over a hundred years old. My aunt, Aunt Emarra, is for, um, tonight, so. And I thank my family for being here, because when you run off, it's your entire family runs off.
And now we're complete.
Now we're complete.
Yes.
At this time, we have no public hearings, we have no public comments, but we're sure we're proud of the number of public that is here this evening, and we invite you back at any opportunity you have and sign up to speak for public comments. We think it's very important that we have our public's input. Uh, for our consent agenda, I will read the consent agenda, followed by, if you'd like anything moved to new business, we may do so, otherwise, I just need a motion to approve. Consideration of the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 regular meeting, consideration of the mayor's committee appointments, consideration of adoption of resolution number 2019 dash 24, setting the meeting schedule for calendar year 2020 Board of Commissioners meetings, consideration of budget amendment number seven for insurance proceeds from prior year in the amount of $17,700 for hurricane damage to ball field lights at town parks, consideration of approval of holding a special meeting on December 5th, 2019 at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting is for discussion of and possible action on chain of command and protocol, board rules of procedure, ordinance number 2018 dash oh nine, consideration of sale or long-term lease of real property, commissions and committee rule related to married couples serving on the same unit, appointment of commissioners to ex officio seats, attending the chamber luncheon on December the 9th, new board meeting with media members on January the 10th, and closed session related to a personnel matter. All items on this consent. Yes, sir?
To approve it.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, in this meeting, our special meeting on December 5th is open to the public, and it does start at 5:30 PM in this room. All business, there isn't any. Reports and information, of course, this is coming up a very big weekend for us, and that is that we have our Christmas at the lake on Friday, we have our Christmas parade on Saturday, followed by activities up here at Town Hall. We also have some breakfast with Santa. If you, if you don't have a ticket, you need to make sure you get one, because they sell out. And this year, just like last year, it's going to be at the Hope Mills Fire Station, and the kids love it there. So just know, if you haven't got a ticket yet, hopefully we've still got some left. Huh? I didn't, I did vote. Yeah, I did.
I did.
I was fast.
It was, it was unanimous.
It was unanimous, too.
It was unanimous.
All right, staff comments at this time, I'll turn it over to our Town Clerk, Town Manager, and our Town Attorney.
Congratulations to the new.
Thank you, thank you so much. Official comments, are there any this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to take the opportunity again to just say that I want to thank everyone in attendance here tonight. I want to thank everyone who's supported me as the candidate for Commissioner, especially my family and my wife. It's, uh, there'll be a whole new two years ahead of us, and I hope there's no dark clouds in the sky of that two, two year effort that we're going to make. I thank you for letting me take the oath of office for about the ninth time. Long time, guys. My wife keeps saying it's time to quit, but as long as there's business to do, I'm willing to be a part of it. And I'd ask you to be a part of it with me, support positive things for the town of Hope Mills, and us move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to let the, those of you know that December 17th at 9:00 AM, we will have a coffee with the clergy. We're going to make sure that we push this, this time especially, uh, we want our Hope Mills clergy to be a part of our invocations here at all of our meetings, so we're going to meet with them and get organized again so that we can get this group, uh, not only praying for us, but also being united in the things that we do in our community. Um, the other thing I, I think is important is that Psalms 37, Nadine, uh, if anybody hasn't read that, you need to read Psalms 37. That has been a, uh, sermon that Bob Gorman left behind, and Nadine made a point of coming and sharing that one with me. And at, at this time, what's going to happen is we're all going to go over to Parks and Rec, and I want you to know that we're very fortunate in Hope Mills that we have a chef that is famous, he wins all kinds of awards in downtown Fayetteville, but it's Chef Glenn from the diner, and he has, it's a catered affair, and he will have, uh, reception for us along with, uh, we have desserts from, uh, Marcy, uh, which is Marcy Cakes and Bakes on Trade Street. So we encourage you all to join us so that you can talk with the commit, new commissioners, and you can meet and greet with our families. Uh, also, before these, uh, people step down, I want to remind them that I was reminded that we need to take a team shot. So, we're going to try to recreate this picture, and this is a, a team picture of all of us, so that we'll have it as we move forward, knowing that we're all going to work together. So at this time, do we have a motion?
I'm not going to break tradition, motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, we'll see you next, next door at Parks and Rec. And if we will, everybody, to recreate this is real easy. So Brian, you just, y'all slide on over.
You do need to vote on the motion.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, we're going to adjourn.